Meeting of this month, Madam Clerk, can you call the row please?
Dr. This is my colleague, Ms. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Atherton.
Here.
The staff.
Here.
Mr. You know, with the staff.
Um, there is something. Before, I would let the Chief of Staff come, but I'll make some remarks later. I had something that's, oh, I do have something to say. So I know that we have some concerns about our county jail. I have me and the Helen West House Authority are in talks to try to work out that the Police Department will be trying to obtain the Helen House Authority building on Holly Street. We're just talking and hopefully that may happen. And then trying to see if we can get some of their other properties to set up substations throughout the community. So, and then the maintenance shop, we're also in negotiations about that, trying to see can we get some people over on the Helen aside for more protection. That's one thing off the top of my head and it's more coming to me, I tell you. Good afternoon, Ms. Valley.
Good afternoon, class. Thank you, good afternoon, members of the City Council, City Administration and the general public. You kind of have a hybrid agenda in that we just got a couple items on tonight's agenda and then we're going to go back to the agenda from the last meeting and try to finish up the items that were on it. There are at least two guests that we have that I know of and I'd like to try to get them in and out so they can get, they're both from out of town, one is from Marvel, one from Horn Lake in Memphis area. We want to get them in and out so they can be back on the road if you would accommodate them. And since the people from Horn Lake travel the furthest, I'd like to do them first. Your old package, just the Fuse Cloud. And we would, it's time if we can hear from them and then hear from the company from Marvel and then we'll go back to your minutes and things like that, if that's acceptable. Mr. Jones.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Brian Jones, I'm with Fuse Cloud. I'm the Business Development Manager. We're looking to propose an IT solution to you guys. We have a managed solution that we would like to present to you all. Has a pretty good cost savings as well as some upgrades to you guys' current infrastructure. I'm going to pass out a packet.
You know, Jimmy Malding, I'm, I work with Brian at Fuse Cloud. Have any of you guys heard of Fuse Cloud by chance? Okay, so we're, we're local, I say we're local because we're not a big national company, but we're out, we're, our home office is in Jackson, Mississippi. That's where I come from, I come, I drove three and a half hours to see you guys tonight. So appreciate y'all having us, hope you're all doing well tonight. So we're local, we are in, like I said, home office in Jackson. We focus on services for businesses in Mississippi, Louisiana and Arkansas, a little bit in Tennessee, some Tennessee as well. All of our support is local, we've been in business since 2006. We provide voice over IP telephone services, we provide internet services and we provide IT services. Quick question. Do you guys know who provides your IT services currently? I mean, just if I asked you, like who provides your IT services, do you, do y'all know who that is currently? Okay, well, we, we want to change that. I, I, we want to come in and provide, like right now you guys have multiple, multiple providers for IT, multiple providers for telephone, multiple providers for internet. It's kind of a, almost like a hodgepodge of services put together to make an overall plan for you guys. Brian has worked really hard, I know he's probably, he's crazy, I've been up here once or twice, all through the buildings. He's collected a lot of information, but we put together, he's put together a nice congruent plan for you guys. We, we would be the one provider for your telephone services, for your internet services and for your IT services. He just passed out a packet there for you guys on that and you want to kind of go over that now?
Yeah, so I was just kind of, kind of, I'm getting one of a couple of things that I wanted to talk about today. We're looking to upgrade the speeds at a bunch of your locations. To give you an example, right now you guys are running 20 megabytes of service for, for the, for this particular location, we're looking to upgrade this 250 megabytes. In, in today's, in today's technology world, that's, you know, to equip the speed that you guys need, we're going to put hotspots throughout this building to where this will be completely covered for Wi-Fi. And with all that being said, we're also going to save the city $2,000 on that, you know, compared to what you guys heard of the slowdown. Annually, I would say you guys are looking at $26,000 annually and over the course of three years, which is the contract, be $79,000. But we're looking to upgrade all of the infrastructure from cable, internet to fiber optic. And to just give you an example, cable versus fiber, you got fiber optic underground, that's the latest greatest technology and you have paper that runs into coax. Coax, a lot of times alters with weather, with, with fiber, you're going to have a lot more redundancy, a lot better, better throughput. So I would say, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, gotcha. But yeah, we're, we're going to upgrade the technology all the way around with that. We're also going to have the phone service where everything will be congruent, so you'd have one touch dial into all of the departments. We're going to have it to where, you know, if you need to get in touch with the Police Department or, you know, you can just transfer everything, it's a lot, a lot more seamless with that being said. And, and I will just touch on manage IT, we're looking to come in and manage all of your IT. We're going to, you know, basically plug each, everyone's computer where, you know, where things see fit and let's see. Yeah, you're just, overall, just one stop shop everything.
Yeah, I want to add just one or two things to what Brian just said, so important thing I'd like to mention is, you know, years ago, say 10 or 12 years ago, if your internet went down, it was kind of aggravating, but it didn't stop business. Nowadays, if your internet goes down, that's, that's a problem, it's hard to do business. I mean, a lot, a lot of people just shut down us and employees home. So right now you've got cable internet, a lot of places, which is the old copper technology, which certain, you know, copper served us great for years and years and years. That's old now, everything's going to fiber, even like AT&amp;T is getting away from copper. In a few, a couple of years, they're not, in fact, probably won't be a couple of years, probably next year, they're not even going to offer anything over copper at all. So everything's got, is going to fiber, whether we want it to or not, it's going to fiber. A lot of the cable companies will still provide cable, you know, copper, but that being said, fiber is the best way to deliver internet. And everything you guys do from your telephone service to your IT services, probably even transferring, you know, say the PD, you know, video, uploading videos and those type of things, all that depends on a, a good reliable internet. So what Brian's proposing here is putting fiber at every location, taking the cable out that you got in, in certain locations and putting fiber, internet and all those locations, providing voice over IP telephone service for all the locations, so everybody's got the same service, same telephones on their desk, you know, can extension dial each other, you can transfer calls to each other. In fact, you can transfer, you can transfer calls to any 10 digit number, it don't have to be in your system, you can transfer calls to, you know, wherever, it doesn't matter. Somebody needs calls and they look for a restaurant, you can transfer them to a restaurant, it doesn't matter. You transfer calls to any 10 digit number. And then the voice, the, the IT you mentioned, we, we provide unlimited desktop support. So if, if you have trouble with your desktops, we're here for that, or your laptops. We also provide all the email licenses, the Microsoft 365 or Google, I think y'all use 365 if I remember right, we provide those licenses included in that package, so if you're paying that separately, that goes away, we absorb that. All your antivirus software, we use a high level, intergrade, enterprise grade EDR program called Sentinel One, which is top of the line. So we provide that cyber, cybersecurity for all of them, that license is included for all the computers, backups for all the computers, we're going to, it also includes us managing all your network gear, routers, switches, Wi-Fi, all that, we become your IT department for basically all your services. They have any servers I forget?
Yes, all that's included, so we're going to cover all the servers.
Yeah, so servers, we're going to, we'll manage those, same thing, cybersecurity on them, backups on them, we even provide a disaster recovery program, include it in there. So if, if a server were to die, we can spin that server up in the cloud for you so you can operate, keep going while we get that server replaced or repaired or whatever needs, needs to happen there. And we also do a couple more things, there's cybersecurity training, awareness training, so each month everybody gets a little video to watch, just helps keep everybody aware of things because you know, ransomware and phishing attacks, all that's so prevalent these days. We just, we do some cybersecurity awareness training for everybody, take a little, watch a little video, and at some point you probably, you may get a, an email getting a test, if you click on that link you weren't supposed to click on, you're going to get another training. And then we, we'll come into once a year, at least, probably the first year we do is twice, but each year we'll come and sit down and do a full review with you, what, here's what all we've been doing, here's all the threats we stopped, here's all your, here's all your computers, here's who's using them, you know, full, a full breakdown of everything we've done and all your equipment. And then part of that assessment, a part of that review is us giving you guys a forecast of what you need to budget for how many years to replace old equipment. So three or four years out, we'll give you a budget for each year that says, you know, things are dying this year, budget this much, and this year this much, this, you know, for three or four years. So we, we become that, that CIO, that virtual CIO for you guys. Would I live out?
Installation is included as well, I don't think we.
Yeah.
No upfront costs or anything.
Any questions?
We all live Cleveland, Mississippi.
Not yet.
Not yet.
We do a lot of Mississippi counties.
We have a bunch of references for State of Mississippi on some government accounts that we do, County of Tuncas, one that's close to you all that we currently.
Home office is in Jackson, Mississippi.
Jackson, where do y'all work out of?
I'm out of Jackson, he's out of Olive Branch.
Olive Branch?
Yes.
We've got, we've got techs off, I've got a tech in Arkansas, not too far from here, doing an install at a really large ambulance service you guys probably, probably going to work with. Yeah.
What city is in Arkansas?
I think there is, Hope, Arkansas, is that where they?
Hope?
I think so, I think that's where he is tonight, he's there today, tomorrow, but we're all over, we, we cover. We actually have services in about 40 states, but we, most of that is we focus on Mississippi kind of surrounding states, but we have a lot of customers that have, you know, remote locations and so, so then, we got one local, one customer that has like 200 sites all over the state, so we're in a lot of states, but mainly our focus is Mississippi, Louisiana, Arkansas, Tennessee. And all, all of our support is local, we don't, we don't send anything over to overseas call centers or anything like that. You call to talk to somebody, it's going to be somebody in Jackson or Tupelo or Olive Branch or something like that. So no, no, we don't, we don't have any, we don't send anything offshore for support or anything like that, we're all, all local.
So you said there are no upfront, upfront costs?
No upfront costs.
So the, the transition from to fiber optic cables, that's not going to cost?
We've, we've accounted for all that and then.
Okay. And what about the telephones? We have telephones now, are they going to be the same telephones we have?
You can do what you want with those?
It's just the services.
We're going to put a brand new telephone, we're going to put a brand new, we use Polycom or, it used to, I have a hard time not calling it Polycom, they dropped the com, it's now Poly, but it's Poly, we used to be Polycom telephones.
So, so we will be getting different?
Brand new telephone. Polycom's the best telephone out there for voice over IP.
What do y'all, what do y'all, what do y'all do for like, like emergency services? Like if the internet goes down, do y'all keep some pots just for, just for only emergency thing?
No, so that's one of the great things of voice over IP, when I, I know that like people want me to shut up so y'all can, they can get on to business, but, you know, back when I started selling voice over IP, 2010, nobody wanted to put their phones on internet because my internet wasn't very good, never go down. And the question was asked, I would hope for somebody to ask, because with the old pot signs, if they go down, you didn't have any way, you know. We've got multiple ways to make sure you get your calls, if the internet goes down, we can switch, make rolls or phones to ring somewhere, it's your cell phone, they can ring your cell phone or a different office or it can go straight to a voicemail and two things always work, voicemails and auto attendance, no matter what, and it go to a voicemail and then that voicemail can email to you, I've got multiple ways to make sure you get your calls.
But even to the emergency responding, you said like the fire department or police department, you know, it's, it's a, it's an internet goes down, communication for them, like.
Yes, I mean, I would, we can, we can.
You can still afford it.
Yeah, so we, we have a bunch of belligerents in place. Site does go down, it can happen to where it just rolls over to a cell phone.
And do we include any backup internet? My, my, my preference would be, maybe like a LTE device or something out there, it's a little money per month. Have a backup internet, that, that's the best thing, so this rolls over to the internet.
Yeah. Our cell, it can go to a cell phone.
That's cool. But we have, we have ways of making sure you get those calls equally without.
Can I, can I ask, and it may be something that the city attorney can answer, but we, we, we're under contract with another company for, I think we're leasing telephones, so what will we?
I was looking at that contract, that contract, I'm sorry, under evaluation for the record, the contractor was Tellogics and the initial contract was signed June 29th, 2021 for 50 months and it is set to expire September 29th, 2025.
So yeah, typically what we would do, we'd set up a court date when that particular contract rolls off and then we'd just come in and install ours at that time.
Yeah, we can, we can work with you on the time, we can go ahead and get the IT stuff going, get the internet going and then if we need to hold up a month or two on telephones, we can do that.
And typically, and typically construction for fiber, with us running fiber to all the locations is going to take some time. We usually say up 90 to 120 days, so this really is the prime time to start the conversation for it and start getting the ball rolling for it.
Yeah, so I, I actually probably a pretty good timing, we may have to wait a month or something like that before, but. Does that sound good?
Brian?
Deserve it.
Just so that, no, how did you come up with this proposal? If you come down, maybe rather you just show up for the night.
I've, I've been talking with the city clerk, I've actually took, took on some of you all's bills and just analyzed those, so just by me going through and analyzing you guys' current bills and what you guys are utilizing now, I just took all the information and, and put it into our, into my system and, and just compared it, you know, and actually just, it's not really, it's the apples, we're actually going to do upgrades compared to what you guys have now. We're going to speed up, we're going to ramp up this, this location here, maybe five times more than what you guys have now from 20 meg, this, you know, 20 megs to 250 meg with fiber optic internet.
And actually, I've been up here once or twice. Did sidewalk through a building, counted telephone, switches. We, we, we try to do our homework.
Are you all working with any other businesses in town?
I don't think we have anything in this town.
Not yet.
But all of Arkansas is a, is a focus, especially north, kind of this, this, I guess this north east area where it's close to Ryan.
Wild Bull up in that area, y'all up in there, Wild Bull?
I don't, I really can't, we, we've got some stuff over here, but I'm not familiar enough for the towns to even tell you, I mean, we, we've got.
Your main focus was just Helen because that's what you have right now, it's not about where you are, it's about what you can provide to us, so what is the wish that you all would like to do, because figuring out, trying to figure out where they are, they're here with a proposal to us to see if we want them or not, so that's what we here, where do you all want to go with this service, do you all want it or not, we need to move on. So what, what is the wishes of the body at this point? So what, what is the wishes of the body at this point?
Uh, on, on the agreement, are there any outs? I mean, that's six for three years. I mean, God forbid, you know, hopefully.
Yeah, I know, we'll tell you that, that's one thing. We, we track very well as our, our churn rate, meaning how much we lose. Our churn rate is a fourth of the industry, industry averages. And, um, we also track, or we have a C set, C sat score, customer satisfaction rating. That's almost a hundred percent. It's like ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. We, we don't lose the business.
Okay.
We do not, we, we take care of our customers and we're not a huge company. We're, you know, we're, like I said, a middle sized company. We don't wanna be a huge company. We want, we want focus on taking care of our customers and we do that. But we don't, we wanna get you a bit on the books.
I, I can say this is definitely a very fair price. Um, I mean, for what we were, when I was with the Department of Arkansas Heritage, this is about what we paid per month for internet and for phones. So this is a, this is pretty standard. In fact, we'd also have a customer service and service agreement. That sounds like a good idea.
Plus, it's a two thousand dollar savings of which you probably have.
Yes, sir.
Per month.
And that would get, that would get rid of all the pots. Do we have, still have any pots?
You got.
We're gonna leave the E nine one one where it is.
Okay.
Since that's. And that's not included in the total.
That's not included in the total.
Okay. That's, that's what I was, that's what I was kinda talking about.
A T and T's got that nine one one stuff. They kind of got that marketing forward.
So what is the wishes of the body at this moment? Would you all like to obtain?
So our contract, our contract, I didn't cut you off now, I'm sorry. Our contract ends in June.
September.
Septem, I'm sorry, September.
That's just for the telephone.
Yeah, that's the telephone.
Just the telephone, yeah, because we don't have an internet service, too. Okay, guys, like Sun Lake or. Which you can cancel any.
I think, I think a lot of our service, we've just been overlapping. That's why we're, we're talking about bills, bills, bills. We gotta, we got so many of them. So I, I think I'm in the position of what do y'all want to do? I mean, that's. What you should do is, is try to get, see how much are you. We all are, are talking about spending and here we are finna get into another contract with somebody. So why don't you all take your time and see what is it that you, how much is internet costing? How much phone service costs? How much the, the, the support that we're getting now? What is it gonna cost us? So it, it, it sounds good that we're gonna save, and then you'll come back a, a, a month later and tell me this. So once you get around, back to me, say we can't do this. So make sure you ask the clerk and the treasurer who pays the bills, not I. What they think and how they think it, it's good for us. So your clerk and your treasurer writes checks. And what they do, so maybe you can ask them questions on how we're gonna pay for this. Because if we, if, if we're, I'm not gonna say what we are doing, but does it make sense? You, you understand you got mixed services. But are, are we gonna pay off the debt with these people first? Or we're gonna let their debt linger so we can put it on a piece of paper and say this is what we owe again? I want you. I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I want, I wanna clear around this table on what we're trying to do. Uh, the, the music that you play, it sounds so good to me, but I have no vote in it. They do. So I'm trying to make sure we all on the same page because see, you won't be here six months from now when they say, oh, we can't pay this, but you entered into a contract. So I think that they need to be making sure they talk to the clerk and the treasurer who signs checks, not I. I mean, who, who, who pay the bills, not I.
Getting the service. I mean, it's going to directly affect you guys. We're gonna use it day to day.
I mean, you know.
I mean, is it something you need? Is it something you think is a good idea or?
I mean, that's for the clerk and the, and the treasurer. I mean, I, Miss Ford answered the phone. I use the internet service, Mr. Val and I, but I mean, it, it could possibly, you, because we're using Optima, the phone service, you know, you, you all do know last time when the phones were turned off and they said we didn't pay, but the next day are back on them. So we need to try to figure out. Are we gonna, are we gonna make sure we consistent? But it could work. I mean, it's, it's, it's basically, if it's a savings for the city and we can show it, let's go with it. But I don't wanna be in the position that when something happens, the finger's pointing back at me. So the clerk and the treasurer, they see the bills. We should refer to them on this, on the, on this issue.
I don't think it about asking about the bill.
Second, how I feel, but.
I understand what they asked you, but I want, I wanna make sure when the bill, when the bill comes.
I'm just trying to, Ms. Davis, I think is a great idea. It, it sounds pretty, um, service, I mean, on the surface and what, but they're sending me a good presentation. I, I, I like the continuity of service. Uh, thank. I mean, I'm not voting, but I think it'll be, it sounds good.
So do you offer camera, we have cameras in the hall. Do y'all offer camera service too?
We, uh, not as a monthly service, but it's self installing.
So that's something that, that should be thinking about as well because they're paying separate for a camera service that, but that, the wheel locked out of it, so.
We, we certainly do that.
What is the wishes of the city council? This is, this is.
I mean, I guess my own concern, no, I don't really don't have any concern. I think it's good. But, um, I guess, um, when, when would, when would services start?
I mean, if you all voting and saying y'all want to go to the thing, then, then they'll do what they need to do. So.
I mean, I'm gonna run, cause I'm saying there would be an overlap, maybe might be a potential overlap.
They said they would hold it.
I'm not, overlap, but not, you mean with the other I T?
Yeah, well, I'm not a team. There's no contracts. There's a contract on hand until.
He's talking about the telephone. I T people, I think they're pretty much month to month anyway. I think that the contract may have gone out.
We, we will, first thing that happened, once you got signed, it gives you project manager. He will work with you on the timing. So we can make sure our building starts when that starts, our starts.
One more thing is very important. What, how do you guys deal with onsite business?
Onsite business?
Yes.
Putting down trucks in the over here.
Okay, that's, that's. Yeah, I mean, but, but the, uh, the people we have now, I think that they, they do most of their stuff. So I think the.
Well, it's completely true. We did most of it remotely, but we need a truck.
I know, but in some situations where we do need someone on site. It's, it's a lag, you know, two or three days, and so you can get down here, someone needs it, that, that'd be great.
For the I T, ours is unlimited. Unlimited lag, so we don't charge you if we have to go to a truck. We don't charge you with a truck. A lot, a lot of I T companies say the remote's covered, but if we get a truck, we're gonna bill you for it.
Okay.
Ours is included.
Okay, that's great. Okay.
So what is the wishes? Is there a promotion or a second on this issue?
I'm making that.
Dr. Miller made a motion to, into a contract. Is there a second? Ms. Davis second motion. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk? To enter into a contract with the, with, with. Cop, Dr. Miller's second motion, Mrs. Davis, I mean, Mr. Miller made the motion, Ms. Davis second motion. You got it? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Miller?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Five, yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our, our next guest is Mr. Armando White. And he has a, a letter submitted to, may I ask him to come tonight? Uh, I'll let him present and then let him.
Good afternoon, City Council.
Hey, man.
So my wife and I, we presented a, a proposal to the city to, I guess, rectify some debt that's owed to us. Um, we basically, excuse me, uh, we basically, what we proposing is that, that the, the debt that we owes the city that we, um, basically counsel out with the debt, the debt that the city owes us, we would like to counsel out the debt that we owe the city. And that's pretty much.
Well, this is the letter, uh, you all made us explain, uh, the letter. So back in two thousand and twenty-one, under Mayor. Uh, back in, um, two thousand and twenty-one, under Mayor Kevin Smith, we, um, uh, ran out some dumpsters for the city. We did some debris for the city. And, um, after we finished the job, the mayor didn't pay us. He left us with a balance of thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. Uh, we came to the meet and, um, he just kept saying that he didn't, uh, know about the, uh, the bill. We sent, they said he was getting all our bills each week. Um, and they were sending us emails saying that we would get paid, but we never got paid. So, um, this year, what, in twenty twenty-four, Mr. Valley reached out back with us to see if we would run out dumpsters to help with the city with debris removal and, uh, sanitation. Oh, twenty-three, it was twenty, twenty-three, by the way, uh, with debris removal and, um, dumpster for the city when the sanitation department couldn't get in the landfill. And, um, we end up getting a bill. The city was paying when we started back in twenty twenty-three, they paid the bills. Uh, back in, I think it was in May, um, we end up bringing some more dumpsters and we end up getting the city end up owing us like twenty thousand dollars. Um, we got a check, May, March, uh, I think March the third for twenty thousand and, uh,
Two thousand dollars.
Twenty.
On what day?
We received a check, um, for twenty thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars. And that was for a balance, uh, that the city owed. Um, but we have a, we have a landfill that, uh, balanced, uh, forty-three thousand, three hundred sixteen thousand, thirty-five cents. So when we did the thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars that the city owed from twenty twenty-one plus the twenty thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars, that was a total of fifty-eight. Yeah, well, fifty-eight thousand and thirty dollars that we, we owe by the city. So we end up getting a check for the twenty thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars and we subtracted from what we were owed, leaving a balance that the city still owed us with thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Well, we took that from the balance that we have with the landfill as of March the third was forty-three thousand. So we take the forty-three thousand, we owe the landfill and subtract the thirty-seven that the city owes us, we were owed the landfill, uh, five thousand, five hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. But we went, we proposed, we sent that to check to Mr. Reginald at the landfill and he wouldn't accept it. He said we had to pay it all in full. So we were coming tonight to see if we can rectify this bill that we've been owed since twenty twenty-one and clear out our balance, uh, with the landfill.
So, so I, I hear twenty thousand dollars. I, I wouldn't know, I wouldn't know where the twenty thousand dollar check, I was in D C. So I'm trying to figure.
The twenty thousand dollars for the services that they provide to the city.
Yes.
So, so, so the thing is, the twenty thousand dollars.
I have a practical question.
Yes.
Practical question for me.
I can't talk to you all of you. The lawsuit that I still have, your lawsuit still pending, says Adam Sam represents you all. We still have the lawsuit this, in certain quarter.
No, not necessarily. I mean, yes and no. So the lawsuit that, that we got is for thirty-seven thousand. However, we owe y'all thirty-seven thousand. So technically, if y'all counsel the balance, then we ain't got no lawsuit, then we ain't got no money to talk about. If that makes sense.
I understand, but. Ethically, I can't participate in the conversation. You all can talk among each other, but they have a lawyer and they'll know the side of the lawsuit we meet, so.
I, I can't participate.
Yeah, but. Yeah, we can, because.
We owe y'all, y'all owe us, and we owe each other the same amount of money, so it's like, let's counsel.
You said, come on, bar, agree with it again, the difference.
Yeah, we got the check now for the difference.
For the past, yes.
Then we be right back on the track, because y'all, the city still got, you know, you know, they said y'all still got a bill. We still use it. I, who knows?
I think that. I think the, the, the best way to try resolve this is give Mr. Sims his official letter. So that we can resolve this all together.
Yeah, that's what we've been trying, trying to do, so. Talk to, I tried to see him.
Well, what I do, what I do is I send Mr. Sims a letter until y'all appear and we need to try to resolve the matter.
I should have been with it for like the last three years and we have to come now, we owe y'all. So we can't give y'all, let y'all prepare. And so it's like, you don't wanna lose our, our privileges to use the landfill because we can't afford to pay. And the only way that we see that make more sense to us is just to counsel the debt and then we really ain't got no lawsuit. Because we owe y'all, y'all.
I'm, I've been in some discussions with the city attorney, well, I'm Derek Turner, I'm the city treasurer. Uh, I've been in discussions with the landfill director and the city attorney.
I think we need to just need to pause.
I'm not talking legal stuff. I'm not talking legal.
I got you, but we need to talk to Mr. Sims because any negotiation we have.
We gotta talk to him.
We need to talk to Reg and Mr. Sims.
I did talk to you about this.
Not, not twenty, not paying somebody twenty thousand dollars and then when, this, this, this is the thing that I'm trying to get one piece of, and then we, we, we can't pay our bills, but there we go. I'm out. And there's a twenty thousand dollar check. But when something happens, it's, it's thrown at me. I'm in D C. And I'm looking at, you know, and then you say, well, you've been talking to landfill director, but I'm, 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 I'm out of the loop. It's, it's, and I know about D W D, I know about that, but it's like, I understand what Mr. White, that's why he's about trying to do. Which, if that's what's about it, that's fine. But think about it. You saying we, when it comes to paying the bills, I'm trying to get the listening audience to understand that I don't pay them. Twenty thousand dollars was paid and I wasn't here. That's it. You know, it could have been, it could have been done a better way, you know, and say, hey, Mayor, this is what's going on. That's twenty thousand dollars. We sure appreciate it, because we were running out of funds. We hadn't had a check since May. And we can still, like, like being faithful to the city because y'all had the trash issue. And we don't.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
The problem is that they have a lawyer.
Who's not here.
Right.
And we, you can't, can't tell you, you can talk to them around his, the lawyer. If he doesn't even know they're here, but we know they ha, they have a lawyer, we shouldn't be doing, we shouldn't be talking to them, right? I mean, that's.
Can I say?
For the people with the law licenses at the table, we are cringing over here. We can't talk to them.
We understand it, but we have, we, our lawyer, we can't.
There can be no brunt for us. If he, if he doesn't represent you anymore, then he needs to dismiss the case and step out of it. But if he does, he has to know that we're talking to him.
Yeah, but he always said he can't get valid, so we, uh, we, we.
But he had, he needs either, he has either withdrawn from the case, or he needs to be here. We can't just talk to you around him. And that's the problem. And, and it's, it's, you know, I'm sorry to come off that way, but for the people with law licenses at the table, we're like, stop, 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 stop. They have a lawyer. So we can't talk to you without him being, he doesn't even know you're here. And so it's really improper contact with his client. And so that's why I'm saying we should, we just have to end this conversation.
Man, I, I, I text him. I haven't received any letters or emails or anything from him. Got the case.
See?
Uh, but.
That's what we're talking about. We, we, each one knows one thing, but you saying one thing else. So we, what else?
We just don't lose our privileges to use the landfill because that's how you don't have to. And we.
Well, you won't. That's it, you won't. It's if we get this resolved.
And he said you won't.
I hope that you won't, I hope that's, yeah, that's fine.
But by having a lawyer, you won't, we, we're just working there.
Okay.
We, we, we get something from your lawyer, but we, we won't until we get this resolved, so we, so the lawyers at the table won't be cringing. We, 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 we'll work with you, I'll work with you, we have my word, so, thank, thank, thank you for coming, but if, if you give us that from your attorney, that you're not represented by our attorney, we can go forward, but you, you won't lose your privilege at the landfill. I'll talk to, I'll get the treasurer to talk to the director of the landfill.
So, we got one more question, I about the previous bill, about the, about the, you know, about the going forward.
What you owe us?
Correct, because like, right now.
So, what you do is, hold on there?
Yeah.
Just make, just, just, we'll, 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 we'll talk to somebody.
So, I advise the councils, mayor, everybody, stop talking, we're not gonna talk about the issue. Don't tell him anything about what he should do about his lawyer or any of the council. Let him make his informed decision about whatever you want to do about lawyer, I text his lawyer while we're talking, and I'm sure he'll respond to me later. We will try to resolve the matter through his council.
Okay, that's fine.
Appreciate y'all, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, on tonight's agenda, if we could go to the minutes, um, I believe it's four pages. It's the minutes of the March the fourth, uh, meeting. Um, there was a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and February the fourth, that was approved unanimously. Um, block ops made a presentation and no action was taken, um, historic, on honor of a street name, no action was taken. Uh, no action taken on either of the treasurer's reports. Uh, the motion to approve a five K run on July the nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty-five, this is the Lockhart, presentation made by Joseph Woodfield, uh, there was a motion to approve it by David, seconded by Ethely and Maxine Miller. That was voted unanimously in favor of doing that. Uh, housing authority appointment was delayed, A and P appointments delayed, um, airport appointments delayed, and I spoke with Ms. Miller about being on the job description committee. Um, and then there was a vote on, uh, confirming Paul Radel to the airport committee, and it did not get the necessary five votes. Uh, then there was most approved grant money received by the police department at nearly seventy-four thousand dollars, that was approved unanimously. And there was a motion to adopt the resolution waiving competitive bidding for that same money, and that was adopted unanimously. Then there was a motion to approve a payment to Quaterbone Plumbing for its invoice in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-seven cent, and that was approved unanimously. And then at the end, Mr. Messina, uh, made a motion to, uh, adopt the resolution, asking the Arkansas Department of Transportation to take action at the intersection of Valley Drive and Oakland and Midland Heights regarding erosion and a damaged abutment, and that, uh, resolution was approved unanimously. And then there were some announcements, so those are your minutes, if there are no necessary corrections, we'd ask that you approve those minutes.
This second approval, I mean, that motion approval is the presentation about staff, so, Miss Davis.
This is March the eighteenth.
March the fourth.
Fourth.
Yes, sir.
Miss Davis will accept all this, she's staff, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Miller.
The second motion, are there any discussions about minutes?
On the, um, accepting of minutes, can, if you were absent from the meeting, can you vote to accept an answer, should you abstain?
If you're absent from the meeting, can you?
Yeah, can you vote to accept the minutes, or should you abstain? Is this a point of order?
I think you can vote on anything presented to you, even if you're absent.
Right, I think you can, you can vote.
Just to find that they're correct.
And you just vote that this is an accurate reflection of what happened at, at the meeting, I guess, and what up to, if your consciousness, if you, we don't know if you watched the video, or, or, or whether that, so you, you can vote at any point.
Okay, that's ideal, okay.
Madam Clerk, is there any more discussion? Madam Clerk, can you call the room, please?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia? Ms. Davis? Five, yes?
All right, then, if you go to the water company item, it's on page ten of your current, of your today's agenda, there's an invoice from Hawkins in the amount of five thousand, two hundred, three dollars and sixty-five cent.
What page is that?
Page ten. Ten.
Ten.
Ten of forty. And that invoice has three items, two of those items in the description are just letters and numbers. So, because they're letters and numbers, I asked Hawkins, what are these items, what do they represent? And so, the thirty-nine pages or so, how many pages it is that follow, uh, explain to you that this is trade secret stuff that the water department is getting from Hawkins to keep the water system functioning properly. It's, it's the essence of it, so, I, I can't tell you what it is, because it's a trade secret, but you got the material safety data sheets explaining to you what it is, and we're asking you to authorize that the five thousand, two hundred, three dollars, sixty-five cent be paid, uh, as the funds become available. Uh, this invoice is dated March the tenth, so it's fairly current, and the net due date is April the twenty-fourth. So, we got time, but I didn't want to come in here and have an invoice and couldn't explain to you what it was.
Is, is, is there a motion to pay the five thousand, two hundred, three dollars and sixty-five cent to Hawkins for the invoice, for the information you just received from the chief of staff?
I have a question, who, who hired them to do, do what work?
No, Mr. St. Columbia. Like, these are.
These are chemicals.
Oh, chemicals.
This is not work they did.
Okay, 'cause I couldn't find anything.
We, we, I, we'll explain that to you, that this is.
We got the chemical.
Yes, sir.
We got the bill.
And we got the bill, we got the chemicals at the bill.
You wanna see him?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure, I'll show them to you, the, the, the water, the water superintendent was here, we want, we just see what we got, so is there a motion?
Uh, just moments, ma'am, Mr. St. Columbia, you go to page twenty-five or forty, and those of you all who are interested, you go, page twenty-five or forty. Twenty-five.
Ten, forty.
Uh, number three, it's got composition information on ingredients. And it's aluminum chloride, hydroxide, and then, the second item is a trade secret, and there's sodium chloride and there's water. The trade secret part is why the, the name of the item is just letters and numbers. And that's why we requested this information, so we could explain to you what it is. It's something they use to get all that bad stuff out the water, so you can drink. Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
Do we, do we customer elect to vote on stuff like this, like, if it's a regular, like, you know, supply for the water company, do we, do we, just anything that's over five thousand?
Well, the rule is five thousand, so that's kind of why we presented it, well, yeah.
I mean, but what I'm, I think what he's saying is this is something that's just, the chemicals that the water department needs on a daily basis, or whatever, it's just a regular.
Yeah, yeah, the ordinance doesn't say that.
So, we just, what, what, what? For transparency.
Okay.
I'll make sure to judge everything.
On, on the mayor's spending authority, I think the only exception to the spending authority is payroll that you've already pre-approved. All the rest of it is subject to the mayor's spending authority. Certainly, I think this is a waste of time that we have to go through this, if you ask me my opinion, and the spending authority ought to be changed, but right now, this is where we are.
So, there are motions to pay Hawkins five thousand, two hundred and three dollars and sixty-five cent? Ms. Davis moved to pay Hawkins five thousand, two hundred and three dollars and sixty-five cent, is there a second on this bill as the money comes about?
Second.
Mr. Ethely, second motion, are there any discussions about the motion? Madam Clerk, can you call the room, please?
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yeah.
This, Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Five, yes?
Hey, question, question, is, is this paid from, um, general revenue or from the water company?
It's from the water department, it's gonna be out of water department general revenues, and they may have portioned some water.
We vote on the water companies?
We always do.
Really?
Like, you, you, in your minutes that you just approved, you voted for Quaterbone Plumbing, you, we.
That, you're right.
All that.
But I thought we paid, I don't, for some reason, I was thinking we paid that out generally.
No, 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 we paid that, we, we.
We paid out of water, water.
All right.
So, if that's where y'all want to do all the bills, we can do that as well.
We're gonna now flip-flop between the two agendas, uh, up next, we have Ms. Patricia Ashanti with Delta Circles, the Juneteenth Celebration, but it's in the old packet, uh, it's, it's a request to approve the permit, the, Ms. Ashanti, you. Or whoever's coming forward, uh, let me tell them where, in the old packet, it was on pages twenty-six to twenty-nine.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, everyone, how are you all doing? Good, um, my name is Patricia Ashanti, I'm the founder and CEO of Delta Circles. We are a nonprofit organization located here in Helena, and we are interested in doing a Juneteenth celebration. And I'm going to, um, allow Noni to tell you a little bit more about that, and I'm just gonna pass these flyers.
Um, good evening, everyone, I am Noni Ashanti, and I'm the Agriculture and Innovation Coordinator for Delta Circles. And like she said, I'm just here to give a little bit more information on our upcoming Juneteenth celebration that we are going to have held at our facilities at Eliza Miller Opportunity Hub and, um, one oh six Miller Loop, West Helena, Arkansas, and it will be on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, from three PM to nine PM. We're gonna have live music, vendors, um, food trucks, things for the kids, and all that good stuff. And if anybody is interested in becoming a vendor, or, um, having a food truck, you can contact us at eight seven zero, nine nine five, three nine one eight. And, yeah, so we're just asking for your support and attendance, um, as we celebrate such an important time in history, thank you.
So, they, Mrs. Ashanti, had their permit already signed, so I wanted to thank you all for what y'all doing at the Eliza Miller Hub, thank you so much. So, is there a motion to approve this Juneteenth event for Mrs. Ashanti?
So, move.
Ms. Miller makes the motion to approve the event, or Mr. St. Columbia, seconded the motion, any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the room.
Mayor, may I steal a couple more minutes of your time?
Yeah, yeah.
Just a couple of minutes, um, we were, I'm sorry, go ahead with your motion.
Get your approval, so once you get it through. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
The lawyer's just.
Okay, thank you, I was here, th- thank you all so much for approving that, it's gonna be a magnificent, um, event. I was here about a year ago, and I was talking with you all about a STEM camp that we were doing with Google. And it was a camp that focused on physics and math, and I want to give you a really quick update on that. We had about a hundred students enrolled in that account, in that camp, and we were, um, we, in order to do that, we had to collaborate with the Boys and Girls Club, with Marvel, uh, with several different entities, but we made it happen. For twelve weeks, we worked with our students, and at the beginning of that time, they were assessed for math and physics, and they scored in the thirty percent range. When we ended, twelve weeks later, our students scored in the ninety percent range, and we were just, absolutely, absolutely amazed, the, um, the company that built the platform said that he was so excited, he said they actually were scoring as gifted and talented students. And we were just absolutely amazed at what would happen when we give them the opportunity. And right now, we have a youth coding league that our students are doing, we have two teams. Our seventh and eighth grade team, gosh, it's a coach up, um, our seventh and eighth grade team, right now, is number four out of seventeen teams in this country, and our fifth and sixth grade team is number two out of thirty-two teams in this country. So, we just want you to know, um, what we're doing at the Eliza Miller Opportunity Hub. Um, we want you to know that we are so excited to be a part of Helena, West Helena, Arkansas. We are so excited to be able to go to other places and tell them of our amazing students, our amazing parents, you know, everybody that's working together to create opportunities for people who might end up being our city council members, our police chiefs, our fire chiefs. So, we are, um, excited to be able to move forward with, um, having this event in June. We also want to let you know that we also are supporting our entrepreneurs. Each month, we have a monthly event where we support our entrepreneurs with a networking event. From this month, it'll be May, March the twenty-eighth, and our guest speaker will be Will from Thrive, that will talk about marketing. Also have entrepreneurs there, we also have a famous market that will be held on the fifth, and you're all invited for that. We have finally started a hydroponic farm in our building, so you all can come and see and learn how to grow plants with water, and all of that is happening right here in your great city. And so, again, we want to thank you all for, um, supporting us, allowing us to do what we do, and we will continue to do that, thank you.
Mrs. Ashanti, before you go, because Ava, Ava asked me, she, last year, she's been getting, this year, she's on the, so are we having to get? Boys and Girls Club, yeah, next round, she's still there, they, they.
What grade is she in?
Ava, she was in the fourth, she's in fifth grade.
Okay, we've got something for her, so I definitely would like to talk.
It's a car on my desk, she's together, so, she, Ms. Baker, the Boys and Girls Club, has told me that Ava went through these, these, these projects so quick that we, we don't have enough of it, so I'm excited about this for her.
Yeah, we're actually about to also, uh, we have a three-D printing, um, um, lab, we all started to be created for us, and that will be delivered in, in May, and so, it'll be announced on Facebook and in different places, because we do want people from the community to come and learn how to utilize that, and then we will have programming for, um, students like your daughter.
Well, I just want to thank you for what you're doing for our community, uh, it's, it's a good thing, and my kids appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mayor.
All right, thank you, uh, um, as I, as I pan the audience, I, I, I noticed that we have, uh, three ladies who are similarly dressed. It was a particular purpose, did y'all want to speak, or you just hid and observed?
Glad to be here, we could say something for a minute to you, if it's okay.
Let the ladies, that's fine.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, to the, um, city council, city administration, and to our fellow, uh, citizens. I'm Sandra Valley Bagley, president of the Helena Alumni Chapter Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We are celebrating one hundred and twelve years of sisterhood, scholarship, service, and social action. Tonight, we have our social action committee here in full force, uh, tonight, including your own, uh, Monica Davis, I was about to call her Monica Soror, but she is. Uh, we make these rounds each year to let you know that we're here and that we're working in the community. We're not only, so we're doing what we call red and black, because you can't miss us when we come in the room with our red and white. We found our red and white at the Helena, West Helena School District, we attempted to do one at the, this week, but they didn't. And we're delighted to be here tonight, uh, with the city council and the mayor and city administration. We do not have anything that we're advocating for tonight, but please know when we do, we will certainly go through the proper channels to get on your agenda to do that. Some of the things we do in this city include, as I mentioned, sister, scholarship, service, and social action. Some of the things we do in this city include, as I mentioned, sister, scholarship, service, and social action. Last year, we registered like thirty-five students, Philip's Community College voter registration. We also have to get the high school students registered for, uh, voter registration. We are working this next week, when they're on spring break, we're partnering with the fire department to help feed students who are, uh, have food insecurities. So when you see us, you'll see us red, white, sometimes black, but we're here to serve, and thank you for having us here tonight. Thank you.
I'm gonna tell y'all, I have a bias toward Crimson and Cream. And, and certainly the ladies in Crimson and Cream might have sisters, daughters, and other members of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. And no others in this room have, uh, family members who are members of Delta Sigma Theta. Uh, and so we appreciate what you all do, and appreciate y'all coming out tonight. Uh, so now, let me reposition myself to this agenda that you have. I believe there was an item. Certainly, the police chief was here, but there's an item, uh, that I believe it was Dr. Miller asked, the Marcus Ball to be placed on the agenda. And there was plans, the plans out in the hallway, uh, Ms. Davis asked for a plan on potholes. Um, I'm just looking to see what's on your current agenda. And we do need to deal with Ms. Bennett, you need to vote her up or down on the housing authority. And then go back to whatever remains in this big package. So I don't know how you want to go, what you want to do next.
You want to take care of the housing authority appointment?
So the housing authority appointment is Ms. Monica Bennett. Uh, she's been nominated by letters submitted to the mayor. Uh, we're within the forty-five day range, where you have to either confirm her or reject her. If you fail to take any actions, you'll be confirmed, uh, based on inaction. So that's the status of that appointment.
So is there a motion to?
What page is this?
This is your old.
Uh, Monica Bennett is listed on the front of the agenda, she doesn't have a page.
She's for the housing authority.
Uh, Suzanne McCombe. So as it stands, they replaced, uh, Mr. Walter Simpson with, uh, his name escapes me, named Michael Richmond. Uh, so Walter Simpson decided couldn't serve anymore, and they replaced him with Michael Richmond. His name was submitted, and the council never took any action on him. So Ms. McCombe is the next one that came up, and they nominated Ms. Bennett.
So is there a motion for, to, there is Ms. Monica Bennett for the housing authority board? So Ms. Davis makes the motion to appoint Mrs. Monica Bennett to the West Helena, Helena Housing Authority Board. Dr. Kyle Miller seconds the motion. Is there any discussion about this motion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Columbia?
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Five, yes?
Alright, Ms. Bennett is confirmed. Um, on the A and P Commission, we've gone back and forth about what needs to be done. My understanding, and I've had talking about it, is that we haven't voted. Um, there's been some discussion of whether you needed an ordinance or didn't need an ordinance. But you hadn't voted to, to confirm those, uh, people who've been renominated by the A and P Commission.
The session simply says that, that the city council, they nominate the city council first.
So it seems to me at this point, the appropriate thing would be to affirm them, because they already entered a term to be affirmed for now. We just hadn't taken any action on it.
So the motion to confirm two people?
I, I think we need a little clarity. Uh, Ms. Staley is in the, should be starting the second year of a two-year term. Mr. Harvey's term does not end until May, so you'll be reappointing him for another year, so they probably need to go separate.
So, so, Mr. Staley, is there a motion to confirm Mr. Staley to the A and P Commission? So I can rather move to appoint Mrs. Staley to the A and P Commission, Mrs. Monica Davis second the motion. But then discussions about this motion. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia? Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Five, yes?
Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Matthew Harvey for one-year term?
Three-year term.
Ms. Ms. Davis, Dr. Miller makes the motion, Mrs. Davis second the motion. Is there any discussion about this motion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. St. Columbia? Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Five, yes?
Okay. Um. Mr. The, Marcus, we're gonna come back to him.
Yeah, this is.
Okay, we'll come back to the Marcus, alright then. Up in the water department, uh, Ms. Maxine Miller asked for a C A O, that's Consent Administrative Orders, update, among other things. And, uh, Mr. Rose and I are both here. Uh, I hadn't had a chance to visit specifically about all of the C A Os. Uh, but the one that you were getting the calls about is a wastewater, uh, C A O. Uh, this body had authorized, and Mr. Murdock had hired, uh, E T C engineers in Little Rock to work on that, uh, wastewater C A O. And, uh, I've been in touch with them several times since I got your notification. They've done some work, but they hadn't, uh, dealt with these deadlines, so we're trying to get them back online. What Shockey basically said was, when Mr. Murdock was there, he didn't know what to do. That's basically how he saw it. Uh, and so he's going to fulfill what is required to fulfill. Uh, there's one thing that I, I need to talk with our accounts payable person about, there was a reduced fine. We need to pay about four or five thousand dollars. And we need to get that again as soon as possible, so that it doesn't go up. Uh, but the rest of the stuff is, is in working order, we should be alright. Uh, but there's some work that needs to be done on the wastewater C A O. And so that's kind of where we are. And some of it, we can't do, we gotta have the engineer, uh, to do that. You gotta present a plan, those types of things. Um, and Mr. Rose will probably address this a little bit better, Mr. Rose, you come on up. The pump station at Eliza Miller is, is continuously having problems. Um, the, the company, I can't think of Xylan, has replaced the, we, we got a bypass pump out there. And their bypass pumps keep quitting or stop working or something. And when they go down, the people in Denise Drive, in City Manor, experience, uh, sewer in the, the lower apartments. And one of the, uh, residents is, uh, she's paralyzed, maybe a paraplegic. Uh, but she can't avoid it. And so, Twin City Manor, uh, is asking that we do something pretty quickly about that. Uh, but we've been running bypass. Uh, of course, I would imagine we need some long-term fix to that by putting new pumps into that site. But let me let Mr. Rose address that a little bit further.
Yeah, just to speak, um, a little bit about the unfortunate issues that's been happening over there. Um, I had a talk with the general manager, the regional manager, Ed Xylan, and it was a complete, um, mishap on their end of sending faulty equipment down to us. Uh, it's been adamant for me to make sure that pump station stays running, because if it stops, it backs up very quickly, not a fortunate incident, uh, happens. And it's fortunately, unfortunately, not the first time it happened. So, um, just temporary, short-term plan, we're gonna actually have two pumps over there. One is gonna be on their dime, one is gonna be on our dime, uh, because it's just been too many mishaps with the pumps. And my guys are working on it, their guys are working on it, it's, it's not fast enough. And so we're gonna have a standing bypass pump at that station. And I do, this won't be the time tonight, but I do want to give you guys a full proposal rundown of what it's gonna take to rebuild the station. So I pulled all the information, quotes, and everybody looked at it. Pretty much got it all laid out on what we need to do to repair that station. And, uh, I will want to propose this to you all, so we can move forward with actually getting a solid fix to that station, which has not been done in my time here. Uh, and so it's, it's been held up for a while, but we need to go ahead and make that change along with some other stations as well. But I'm not gonna speak on tonight, but starting with Miller would be great to get you guys approval on what needs to be done and have a complete overhaul on that station.
How much time do you think it's gonna take before you'll, you'll have this also ready?
Um, I actually kind of have it ready now. I didn't bring it tonight, but, uh, we can actually possibly talk about it next. Yeah, on the first.
So it's gonna be on the agenda for, for then?
Yeah, so we can move forward with that. And, uh, like I say, I actually, um, want to kind of ease this on to you all, but, uh, I've been working on getting, uh, basically what we need for all these pump stations to work and start, and ourselves, all these bypass pumps. So it's, uh, some, some costs are higher than others, but, uh, like I said, I just laid it all out to, uh, to start easing. I know we won't be able to get it done all at the same time, but at least if we can, uh, start discussions. With each station, that can help me find order in parts, and we'll start getting to get these things fixed.
I don't know, I don't know when, I'm hoping that it'll be relatively soon. I know that we are still experiencing a lot of leaks. And I know that, um, there's an issue over there on Beet Street, uh, from what I understand. Um, and so at some point, I think that, I don't know if we'll need to set aside a meeting for that. I don't know what we need to do, but hopefully, we can bring all of this and get some resolution.
Yeah, I, um, I will talk with, uh, the Chief of Staff about that, but I would really like for us to have a special water meeting. Because I mean, it's just a lot of different variables and issues, and why some things are done, why things are not being done, plans. Uh, and we really just have to afford to really go through the stages what's needed, so I'm in complete agreeance with that.
Well, on the latter note, the city did receive two, two point five million dollars today for replacing water line. So.
That's gonna be a drastic fix to the, uh, issue, for sure.
Oh, good. So, so we received it, so, uh, what, I'm gonna need you all, a couple of you all to sign, uh, um, so for the check signing for this project. Uh, this administration did this, and it's more in the works, it's just one drop. Uh, people are excited to work with this community. I think they, they, they seeing the, the, and we are going in the right direction, we're. Four, with information, so then people are really seeing that what we're doing. It seems kind of dark, but we're lighting it, we, we're, we're lighting it up by our behavior, by how people see us treating one another at the table. So I always say, we don't know who's watching our meetings, but always be careful how we act. Because people are watching us, and that sometimes makes them want to be a little more giving to us. So we just got two point five today.
So, Mayor, just to be plain, when you say you got two point five today, you received the grant?
Yes, so all we gotta do is now is set up the bank account, I got, we got them together, so they'll start. So we, we, we got the engineering part, and that's where we are now. So we're moving forward. So, uh, we use engineer up here, then we always use Smith and Waddle.
Alright. Um.
Point clarity, for the, the last vote from y'all, reappointed the commissioners, the reappointment was for five years. I know the mayor said one year for Harvard, but they start out staggered, one, two, three, four, five, and they reappointed for five years. Uh, so Ms. Staley's answer will be four years, because she's already served a, a year into her reappointment year. And Mr. Harvard will be five years.
I, I, I would, I, I heard this after, I didn't know if you said one or five.
That's what we were discussing, I was showing in the statue.
Would you like to amend?
Well, that's fine, the question is, will that change any of y'all's votes to reaffirm those people, the fact that it's gonna be a term as opposed to a one or two?
Nope. No.
Okay, well, then we can stay where we are.
We can say, we just ma- made them amend it to reflect the.
Yeah.
Proper years.
Dr. Miller said he wanted to amend the motion, he, he wanted to say they accept.
I guess procedurally, by acclamation, do you all, all agree, uh, that the term is for five years versus one year?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright.
Just to let the minutes reflect that.
So then, the, 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 as I see it, um, I may be overlooking something. Final thing on today's agenda is the plan for pothole repairing and street paving. Uh, Ms. Davis asked that Mr. Uh, Allen, Plans Allen, come to speak to y'all about, uh, what we're gonna do about potholes, street paving, and this, and this, and our streets. Uh, and just as a personal, Mr. Rose, Collins is not here. Uh, but his wife's mother died on Saturday, her name was Ira Lee Scafe Holloway. Uh, and his wife is Zarna, that worked at Walmart for a number of years, uh, uh, and there are other siblings, including Denise Holloway, who was a member of, uh, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. Uh, so. My understanding is the funeral will be at First Baptist Church in West Helena on the twenty-ninth at two P M., I believe it is. And Jackson Harley Funeral Home has charge of the services. That's my current understanding. Mr. Allen. Uh, and, and Ms. Davis, Mr. Allen didn't have a presentation, so I think he's more question than answer at this point. Uh, but he's, he's gonna describe what they've been doing to.
Yeah, well, with the pothole, and, well, we have a lot of street cuts and potholes that need to be filled. And the main thing, we just happen to have the money. And the quickest we're getting the asphalt, we're filling the potholes. And it's going, I think we have some order now, because we have several, you know.
Is there any particular area that you all have started, or are you moving from Helena to West Helena, or?
I have a list that I go by. I'm trying to work this list, you know, but other than that, I feel as though we can start at one end and go to the other. It's just that many.
Let me show, is, this kind of, it may be a little, little too, I mean, I'm sorry. Join, Join and Drive, is that, is that Helena, Helena?
West Helena.
Yes, but is that, was that the housing authority, or is that the city?
It's the housing authority, but we are responsible for fixing the streets.
Okay, it's terrible.
Go, go with the, go with the knees driving.
The street that's still putting gravel in. And that's not gonna hold, just, you're just trying to lift it up till we can get to it, you know? Because some of the hoes are so big, takes like a half pallet. I mean, it's, it's just going quickly.
But I mean, you, you mentioned a half pallet, describe to the council, because they don't do this stuff every day. What are you talking about, what are you putting down, what's the pallet?
A pallet consists of like sixty bags. And it's like, I want to say.
Fifty-pound bag.
Fifty-pound bags. And it's like one pallet, it's like, no, two pallets is like twelve hundred dollars. And if we had seized five thousand dollars, we have to come before you, you all. And I wouldn't mind if y'all approved it, if I can get more, if I exceed five thousand dollars. Because we need it.
The money, the money we're spending to tear down houses, we can take some of that money and fix our streets.
Wait, but wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, let me.
Wait a minute, what?
You can hear? We ain't spending no money tearing down, down houses, those are city employees that tear down these houses. You, you, you know what's going on, don't get in with that damn.
We need to get our streets fixed.
Yeah, wait, wait, what, what, what's your plan? What is your plan?
I believe we get straight, take turnback money, don't we?
So give us your plan. What's your plan to get it fixed? Make the motion to, to get it, make the motion to get.
I'm hoping we go back to the, uh, payroll, uh, that, uh, we had back, uh, two years ago. Cut back some of these high-paid salaries.
What?
You, you want a plan, I'm gonna give it to you now.
Let's go.
You open for?
Let's go for it.
We need to, uh, instead of paying you eighty thousand dollars, we need to go pay you back.
Let, let's not forget that, when you, you're the highest-paid city councilman at this table.
It doesn't matter, that's because he, he had his cut back, he was making more than I was. Ah, come on, I know all about that.
But, 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 let's get you, let's, let's get you, let's get your plan together, we'll stop talking, let's show you work, what you got, let's go with it.
I'll bring it at the next meeting.
Well, no, 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 don't, don't.
I don't have it together.
Don't, don't do us like that, you come in with this nice song and dance, not a music, stop. Put your stuff on the table, let's go with it, you say you got a plan, let's go with your plan. Stop talking, present your plan.
Okay. We need to, we need to go back to paying, reducing the salaries.
Okay.
And, uh.
Is that, is you making it a motion?
I'm making a motion that we, we can't.
Let's go, let, let, let's do that, stop talking, make a motion, get your second, let's roll with it.
I haven't got all mine.
What, what you, what you, what you just presented this, let's.
I'm not ready to make the motion, Mr. Mayor. You understand?
Do you, do you understand? Do you?
Yeah, I understand everything.
So what we want you to do is, if you're not ready, ask the clerk. Ask the clerk to put it on. So what we want you to do is, if you're not ready, ask the clerk, ask the clerk to put it on, ask the clerk, ask the clerk to put it on the next agenda.
Mr. Allen, can you give us a budget about, I mean, I know it's, it's, it's tons of potholes, but if you can give us a budget, that way we can start working and kinda trimming away on this stuff, cause you know, we don't, we don't have good streets and clean streets.
Chief Bill, I, I, I just received a threat. You just, you just said, I better, I better watch what, or repeat what you said. It's, it's a, what, what mess?
We need to cut, we need to take some of that money that we're spending wastefully and fix our streets for the people of this community.
What, what you saying, we're gonna, we're gonna wait until Mr. Allen talk, because we've been, if, if we have not. We are doing what we're supposed to. There's nothing, yeah. Mr. St. Columbia, you know what, just like you said years ago, that I wouldn't be the mayor. I'm sitting here and that, and you gonna respect me. So what I'm trying to, you got, you, you don't have a plan because you, you, the meeting that you're supposed to have to try to tell us what to do? They didn't get together. So you know the meeting that y'all have, that y'all have to try to tell, tell us what to do, but, but my thing I'm trying to get you to understand is, we're here talking about this issue right here. We're not talking about.
Fix the streets. You need to fix those potholes and you can get the money.
Mr. St. Columbia, I'll be respectful.
We get state turn back money from the state to fix the streets of this city.
Yes, sir, we pay your payroll with that, but in all due respect, he was trying to present a plan to Dr. Miller. Dr. Miller had asked him a question. And you started yelling and the mayor back and forth. Well, you started speaking louder than you were before. And, and the mayor, and the, the, the mayor responded and Dr. Miller didn't get to answer to his question. And I'd actually like to hear the answer myself. Can we do that?
Yeah, I was just asking. Thank you. Yeah, I just asked um, if it, if it was possible, if you could give us a budget. Then that way we know what we're looking at and then we can start trimming or prioritizing. Cause we gotta get our streets fixed.
Well, I think uh, four pallets runs like a little bit over five thousand. I can have like eight pallets. You know, I think that's be a little bit up under eleven thousand. And it's gonna take more than that, but I can start there.
Mr. Allen, what I also like to see is a list of, what is your list?
What is my what?
What is your list? And as you fix a pothole, maybe a check off, a- as you add. As a, I don't know, are you, you're the department head person, correct? So if you would just keep us abreast that way as well.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, what, who, what is your list? What's your priority list?
From, I tell you what, from week to week, I can give all of y'all a list of what I'll be working on for that week.
In his department head report, that would be in it for you all to look at. So this is, this is his fourth time on ordering these supplies to fix these potholes. Now, it, it would be nice that if, if we can start looking at doing some half pavement. To try to, cause, cause some of these potholes are, you're gonna waste, this stuff's gonna come back out. It's gonna, if you're gonna waste, if you, cause we need somebody to come dig this out, measure it, see how much it's gonna cost, because guess what? They packing it in there. But, well, had the rain come, what happens? So, so it's more intense than what he's saying. He could put it in there, but it needs dug out, the hole needs to dry. And to put this in there. If a rain come, it's gonna loosen that up, cause right there, right there on Anderson, they have done that several times.
So why don't we not use the asphalt instead of using?
Well, this, this asphalt that we, we, we use the asphalt machine that we have to make sure it, it's heating it up.
Yeah, so, so let, let me, let me help you out. Uh, Anderson Street is a street cut.
That's which one of the street cut?
It's not, this, we're using cold mix asphalt. And cold mix means fire and heated and all that stuff. It's better for us to repair our street cuts with concrete.
That's true.
It's better for us to do that. We're just, over the years, we've had bad, bad concrete work.
Exactly.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's better to use the same people. I'm not saying that. I'm saying it's better to use the concrete. And, and the reason is, you can't get hot mixed asphalt easily. You know, people not set up an asphalt plant to do a small piece of a street. They set up asphalt plants to build a lot of it.
Yes.
And the concrete planted run. That's why it's better for us to use in terms of that. It may not be better in terms of the consistency and all that stuff. But we need to have somebody who does the street cuts, measures them and do them right, where the street cuts are replaced, cause these guys are trying to put cold mix in street cut.
In a street cut.
And they shouldn't be doing that. And, cause they fixing them like with a water company that done work, with a gas company, whoever else cut holes in our streets. Uh, and they're trying to fix those. So a lot of the potholes that we're talking about, some of them are actually street cuts. Uh, where the street has been cut to go down the street to do some work. Um, but this asphalt that he's talking about, uh, to go on those potholes, it works quite well in the, in the pothole, but the street cuts is a bit more complicated than that. Uh, so we need to do, we need to actually look at a different solution. Uh, but I work with clients to get through a list and try to segregate those in terms of what's a street cut and what's a pothole. Have a list of all of them. Cause we should be getting money, we're not always doing that. We should be getting money from people when they do a street cut. They should get it from yet, uh, to do a street cut. That will cover the cost of fixing.
To repair it.
You know, it's just one of those things, we gotta get back into the habit of doing. We, we've gotten out of the habit of doing that over the years. Cause they admit to cut the street before they cut. And we got a spot on Sixth Street or Seventh Street, I can't remember what it is, but you can put a whole casket in it almost.
The Seventh Street.
In front of our park, the gas company did. Yeah. Now, cause we got a big one on Sixth Street that we. I don't remember who's out there. No, no, that's South.
Yeah, South, that's a street cut also though.
That's a street cut in front of Washington. Uh, of course, we gotta fix Beach Street when we get through it, and that's gonna be above the rest of the things that are to fix Beach Street. But we already gone over it, and you've approved quite a lot of the work he's done. But when we get ready to fix the street back, whether you go with concrete or bricks or whatever it is, it's gonna be pretty substantial. But that hole is almost as big as this room. It's certainly bigger than half of this room. Ten, twelve feet deep. Say that again, Doc, I can't hear.
Okay, yeah, are there any funds that we could get for B Streets since it's historical, maybe?
I'm not aware, but I, I'll check. We have, Mr. Turner.
Is there an ordinance when we, and I, I think Mayor Franklin brought it up when he was on City Council, I believe. I'm not sure I think so, but was, is there an ordinance that says that you're supposed to replace?
Asphalt.
Yeah, if you have asphalt streets, you're supposed to use asphalt or the bricks or whatever, is there?
That's me and Ms. Davis.
That, 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 that's, I know that's been a practice, uh, you repair the road to the point that it was when you cut. So you cut asphalt, you replace it with, you top it off with asphalt. Uh, you cut concrete, you top it off with concrete. That doesn't address the subgrade.
Is that just a practice or is that?
I, I, I can look at the code book, I don't remember. I, I, I think that was a practice. I know the State Department requires that when you get your permit, you just cut to the highway. Uh, and so, you know, you set those standards when you do your permit process.
What's the cut to the highway? Whatever was ever.
Well, it's a street cut, but you're cutting the highway.
Okay.
So you cut, let's say on Columbia Street, we got to get permission from the Art Center Department Transportation to dig out there, and then you got to promise when you're gonna fix it back like it was. Kinda like, like there where a perm shop is, or the, the water can fix that, and it's kinda got a little bale there. All of it had to be approved by the Art Center Department Transportation before they did. But we, we do have the, the, a, a lot of work that needs to be done, and some of it, we're mixing street cuts and potholes all over together. Any bump in the road, we call it a pothole, but all of them not potholes.
I hope we can do a better job with um, the replacement of concrete, because most of the places in Helena or some of that have been replaced with concrete.
It's rougher.
Horrible.
It's rougher after you fix it. Yeah, yes, ma'am. And, and I have to agree with you, cause uh, the people that they used to use did my driveway. And we had, and, and I had to get some, they had to bust up my driveway, because they put too much water in the concrete, charged me thirty two dollars. Then I had to pay a guy seventy thousand dollars to wipe it out, and I hadn't had a problem with it. And, and, and the guy's local. And he does, you know, we got people who do excellent work. It, it was, it would be cheaper, I do believe, if we bought the concrete and just tried, let somebody do the labor part of that. It, it, it was, cause we, we had, cause, not talking about anybody, but previously in years, we had, we, they knew the spending limit. If the spending was five thousand, they charged five thousand dollars, and they give you more water than concrete. We did a lot of similar like that, and go out there and look at it now. We did Jane, uh, Jane Street, go back and look at it, it's like that now.
Little Rock Road.
Little Rock Road. So we, so we paid, pre- previous administrations have paid, but the people use more. Uh, over their own. Uh, behind the airport, right behind the ministry door, there's a pothole so big that you can almost put a car in, but, but.
Yes.
Right there. So, so what, what I'm saying is, we, we, if we could find, if we could buy the concrete and just pay somebody for labor. I think we'd come out much cheaper, because you know, they, they can, cause they gonna charge you double what you get for the concrete. So if we get the right, get, get the concrete and let, get somebody to come in who's good at, right. So we would have, and, and some of these be quick fixes. If we have to bring, if we have to bring it to the city council, I think that, I mean, if it, if it's whatever the price it is, if it's a thousand, two thousand, we need to bring it so y'all can see. So then you all can say, okay, this is marked up. But those places I'm telling you about, they, they are horrible. Uh, the, the mid after van runs back there behind um, Christopher Holmes and it's people in wheelchairs. They say it's dangerous for them. They, they, they have to take their time, cause they don't wanna jump the person out of the chair. So I ride around this community and, and I see, I understand that, you know, you know, we, we got it, we got some city employees who are doing a number of things. And I, my, my hat's off to our city employees, cause they do the best they can, what they got, uh, in the cold season, the hot season, they're doing the best they can. So I mean, Mr. Allen, thank you for what you, what you doing in your department. Uh, I, I know it's hard, but sometimes you wanna just be publicly, I, I thank you for what you and your guys are doing. Even with the new garbage truck, even with the knuckle boom truck picking up track, picking up the trags, you know, trying to make, trying to make our community a little better.
And Mr. Allen, I, the reason I ask you about the list is because you would be surprised at how many phone calls I get about potholes. So if I, you know, if I had that, I could say, well, I, I'm looking here and I see you're on the list. Sometimes that just helps people to, you know.
But I was back to the budget.
It, it was whispering in my ear to ask you all to approve purchases of up to ten thousand dollars, eleven thousand dollars for asphalt.
Is there a motion to approve up to eleven thousand dollars for the?
Did, did we not um, have some provision in our budget for asphalt?
So is it, is it more than eleven?
I can go look, but I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
I mean, it was just approval to what the, what's, approval, what's the budget is?
There, there's, there's, like I said, there's some in the budget. I don't, I just, I couldn't tell you exactly.
I mean, I think that whatever the budget is appropriated for right now, we need to stick with that.
Yeah.
And then go from there.
Okay.
Is, is, do you think the eleven is what's in there, or do you wanna check and see? So, so do you wanna hold out, Mr. Allen, till you go, or do you say you wanna call something else until uh, Mr. Turner gets back to see what's in the budget? What? On the last agenda, your packet, your whole packet is.
Um, it's, it's, it's seven forty-two, uh, and I don't know what else you all want to address. Okay, um, Mr. Allen was reminding me that on the sanitation department, we got some trucks in the shop in Memphis. Uh, we actually have three of them up there. The front end load, the two front end loaders, the old Mack trucks. Uh, one you repaired and, and then it needed motor repair, and one they, that needed a motor. And they sent us an estimate on the grapple truck, truck number one oh four. And I believe it was fifty-five thousand dollars and they want ten thousand dollars down on it.
For a new motor? That you said?
I had to look at the specifics on it. I don't think it was motor, I think it's other parts. But what we might ought to do, uh, to the extent that the, the local bank might entertain that, is to look at what it's gonna cost to fix all those trucks. And see if we could finance that, as opposed to ten here, twenty-eight there, fifty here, twenty-eight there. Which kinda interrupts your ability to pay other stuff. Uh, so it may, so I'll just get all of it together. We'll present it to you on the first and go to the bank after that if you approve, going to the bank, but that may be the best approach plan.
How many working trucks do we have right now?
How many trucks do we have working? Uh, we got the new knuckle boom, it's the one oh six. So one oh six is out right now, it's working on par. Uh, the front end loader, the brand new one is in the shop in Memphis on Friday.
Why is it in the shop in France?
I'm gonna tell you, on Friday, it has a plastic oil painting. And on Friday, it was in the landfill and something sharp put a hole in. So they immediately stopped it. Uh, we arranged the tow, talked with the people we bought it from and got it to the Kenworth shop. And it should be back on the ground Wednesday, tomorrow. Uh, I think it was thirteen hundred dollars to fix it. But the plastic oil, uh, wasn't something they could fix on site. They had to, we had to have it towed, so it's probably gonna cost us more to tow it up there than to get it fixed. Uh, we, we arranged with D W D, uh, to bring their front end loaders over to help us. Theirs was down and they didn't come today, so I don't know if they made it today or not. Uh, but I, I'll check with Richard Cobb on that.
One working, one soon will be working.
On the knuckle boom.
Okay.
That's on the knuckle boom. On the front end loader, we just got that one, so we, we have none working right now. The brand new one in the shop. And the other two already in the shop. Right. And then uh, the reload is working, the new reload you bought, and so is uh, truck number fifty-five and number thirty-two. Uh, we're still having our maintenance type issues with trucks, number thirty-two and fifty-five. Those are the trucks where the arm goes out and picks up the can. And we're working on getting some quotes on canisters for residential and dumpsters for commercial. So once we get those numbers together, we'll figure out how you wanna proceed on that part of it.
Our boom truck operators, are they trained? I, I know I brought this up once before, our boom truck operators, are they trained on?
Are they trained?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, sir. Um, and so I think they've both been there more than a year. Uh, we got Terry Gals and, and Pooh. I can't think of Pooh's real name right this minute. What's Pooh's name? What, Levon Morey. Uh, and so they've been working with this stuff fairly consistently for quite a while. They're not as, as skilled as Clancy is. Uh, so every once in a while, Clancy goes out and operates it, they show us new techniques. Uh, but the new truck is, is a little advanced to Clancy's, because it uses a joystick. The other truck used levers. And so it's, it's a little different in how they approach uh, the collection of the waste, but they are picking up commercial waste out of the dumpsters, getting stuff off the side of the road. There's a couple of ditches I'm having to try to clean out too, cause they can reach over and scoop the stuff out and move on. But we just, you know, kinda don't have enough time in the day with one truck to do all of this stuff. Okay. So is there anything else? Mr. Turner was looking for, for eleven thousand.
Yeah, we, we had five thousand, we had five thousand three hundred and twenty dollars in the budget for, for just, I said materials, and that is based on last year's kinda like usage and stuff, so that's, that's why it's low. So they probably weren't, yeah, weren't using a lot of it last year. So I mean, you could, if you wanna, I mean, so they. So, I mean, it's, you could, if you wanna, I mean, so they obviously need to increase. So, I mean, I guess they weren't fixing a lot of potholes last year. So I guess they weren't fixing a lot of potholes last year, I guess, but that's, that's what was in the budget. And it's based on like actual purchases last year.
So what's in that thirty-five dollar? How much is in there?
Five.
Five thousand dollars?
It wa- it's not for potholes, it's for materials. And so if you didn't purchase a lot of materials last year, then. I wouldn't budget, if you only purchase five thousand dollars worth of stuff, I'm not gonna, you know, if, if no one tells me, hey, we're gonna do this little pothole project. We want to need a lot more.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I understand. I just didn't hear.
Okay.
I, I, I wasn't challenging what it was. I'm sorry if I sound that way.
Yeah, so, and then, I mean, and then they've already gone over that. So they purchased, well, this is through February. And so it looks like through February, they've already purchased. Uh, five, close to fifty-five hundred, fi- five thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Asphalt so far. They probably need about tw- I mean, throw another twenty in there just to be on safe side.
What, what, what was the, um, the total surplus in the twenty twenty-five, what? Projected surplus?
The projected surplus. It's only like three hundred. This pretty much is like three hundred dollars.
Three hundred dollars.
But like you said, I, I budgeted the. Payroll expense in the landfill fund, I'll go to general fund, Ashley pays it. So that, that's a little floating after that, cause the general fund pays, Ashley pays the street funds payroll.
No, I mean, and I was talking about the whole, the whole, the whole one.
Yeah, but that, in, in the street fund?
Not street, just.
Oh, I, I don't know. I, I don't have toes. I just have each fund.
So are we going to at any point maybe set up a finance meeting? Can we have a budget?
I think we need.
Just to, uh, see where we.
Yeah, um, that, if I may make a suggestion, we're about to end the first quarter. Why don't we sometime in April? I don't know when, when the first quarter numbers are available, sometime in April. Meet and discuss the numbers from the first quarter and how they line up.
Now, um, the next week is spring break, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So there's, there's no meeting next week. I don't have any spring break children, but you just don't schedule meetings when folks need to be with their children.
Yes, sir. So I think the first, is, is April first, is it?
Yeah, next meeting, April first.
April Fool's Day.
So can we go ahead and start pulling stuff today?
You thinking of like the?
That it won't be so late?
Yeah.
So on the, on the. On the request for the material, we, we waiting or what we doing on that?
I mean, that's kind of what I was hearing, like, let's see what we had, where we are and see if the consensus is what we've done for the first quarter. Is that what you?
Well, I, I, I. What I'm hearing is they already spent more than what's been allocated in the budget. And I don't think. People who got, have to drive through potholes wanna, you know, we can't fix them all, but you could maybe do a few if we gave another. Five or ten thousand dollars to that budget item. It should be within the surplus for the entire budget.
I got you.
Should be. I don't have one in front of me, but it should be for the entire year. So, I mean, I guess. I would move to amend the twenty twenty-five budget to add an additional ten thousand dollars to the line item for materials in, in street.
Mr. Allen moves to put additional ten thousand dollars in the budget under street for materials? Is there a second? Ms. Davis, is there any discussion about this motion?
And then if we need to ship something, cut something somewhere else and move over, we can do that when we meet and, and we talk about.
And I'd like to have a list as well.
Yeah, so get us a list and like estimate, we know it's not gonna be exactly, but about how much it's gonna cost.
Madam Clerk, we call the road please. All right, uh, Bill had a presentation, but he said if we, we take him first on April the first. Uh, he, he, he would not mind y'all adjourned. Everybody right, chief? You wanna go first on April the first? Since we ain't got but five minutes left. Mr. Allen?
Yeah.
You, you still had those, those appointments? Those what? The appointments for the airport commission. Those we were supposed to talk, you know, we were supposed to talk about Ms. Ms. if she could find any information about those and there was none to be found, so. Okay, on the airport commission, uh, Mr. Madam Clerk, has your report changed on airport commission? Uh, and, and I was gonna, thinking that it wouldn't change and, and what it seems to me that happened, we consolidated. And when, whenever those guys, they were from the Helena side, whenever their time turned with the naturally been up. Nobody brought them up to be reappointed or anything. So they, they should have been appointed, but they weren't appointed when we consolidated. And so, you know, this is getting into the city, attorney is Bellerwick, but if they were not appointed by the new city. Then they're not properly serving, uh, those two gentlemen. And so they are not holdovers, they're not. On the airport commission properly. And then the replacement of them comes based on the nomination from the mayor. And confirmation of the council. But it seems to, seems to me you need to appoint two people at a minimum.
So there's, I heard something about there's no such a thing as a vacancy. So what, that, that doesn't apply here?
They never were properly there. What clerk was asked, what Madam Clerk, uh, Ramsay was asked. Was were those two individuals ever appointed? And so they were never appointed, so those fash, slop would never field to begin the, the process. Uh, they were there for Helena, but every, when we consolidated, every ordinance for Helena went away. And so they were not appointed by the consolidated city. As that's the question, uh, Mr. Val asked the question. Ms. Ramsay stated a couple of times that she searched, but there's nothing there, so they were never actually appointed.
So, so the, the, the vacancy part, where Andre said that never makes. Not reappointed or not reelected, but they continue to serve. But in this instance, it's like they were never appointed in the first place. But never got, you, you had to at least have one proper commission that is commissioned to that office. And in this instance, they didn't have a commission to the airport commi- airport seat. Uh, those two gentlemen didn't have a commission to the, those seats. Uh, they should have gotten one, you know? We should have appointed them in two thousand six, seven, eight, nine, ten, or eleven, of the term would have naturally come up during that time, but I didn't know. And apparently nobody's done anything since then. So I guess what they did, what we did as a matter of habit was appointed people when somebody quit. You know, that's basically what happened.
Wow. I mean, I'm just gonna be very honest. I, I understand all that and I know that's legal and so forth and so on, but. My, and it's strictly my feelings. You know, they've been serving all this time.
They haven't been legally serving.
Okay, but I'm just saying, I said my feelings. It may not be legal, but I'm just stating that.
Yeah.
We're just sharing that.
Yeah. And so, um, at some point, you know, the council needed to take some action. And three fifths is five out of six. So is, is it, does the council want to take action on the name, to the name that was submitted to you? So there's, there's no action, you don't want to take any action on, on this?
Last meeting, we also discussed, was, attorney Shiffler was, was kind of coy with what he's saying. And what the question that was asked was about the finances of the commission. And he said the city will see finance and audits, audits and financial statements and actual. The register and, and the contracts and all that are totally different. He said that the auditor has gone and looked at it and they gave you a report, but they didn't give you anything in your city clerk's office about what records they had. I think that they need to have the records here at the city hall, so they can be open for inspection at any time by, by any person.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, the.
The only, the only financial records that we have for them is an au- audit. Yes, the, the legislative audit.
Okay.
Let's load on the financial records that city clerk has for the airport commission.
What else are they required to produce besides that?
It's to be made available to the budget for whatever financial, just as the treasurer has all the records for, for the city.
They don't have to produce that when they do the.
But we just, we never gather them consistently. We, we get them and someone has a question. So in the past, we've asked to get them regularly on a monthly basis. But then you need to give them for a couple of months and then after a while, nobody really asks for them, asks about them and so it just kind of falls a lot of ways aside. I think for Trump's sake. Y'all obviously making your political stand that you're not gonna do anything on. But I think the thing about it is, you need to at least have, make them put the financial records here whether you act on the mayor's appointments or not. They haven't taken over. So the distinction too, Mrs. Miller, is they, they haven't taken over. They haven't been approved and taken over for any of that. No mayor's sworn either one of them to consolidate the city.
And so, uh, Mr. Val, what, so, so what would that mean for any decisions that they made? Like if the board decided to do whatever in the past and.
It, it affects the authority. I need to go back a little bit to the board. The board's seven or five? Well, they still have three, they still have a form with three people.
Basically, those two people can't, should not participate in any action that the commissions.
That's how I put it, so that is, they need to be settled because it's five, it, it's three are out, so it's two, it's two. Cause I, I, I nominated Paul right there and you all didn't do anything with that. So that, so Buff Brothers can't serve because his term has expired. So then you have two more.
He was one of those two.
So it's, it's Buff Brothers, and you just said.
Joe How.
Joe How is, is another, it's another one. Uh, King's term is expired.
Yeah, but we're, we're talking about terms expired. I, when I was talking about, we're talking about the two who were never actually appointed. To the airport commission post consolidation.
But if their term expired, then they can't, they can't, they still, it's expired, so they can't serve still.
I think if it's, I think that's what we're talking about, really. If it, if it expires and they've been officially sworn in. Uh, then what the art supply says, it just rolls over. But the problem is you guys, a couple of members of you, if I'm understanding correctly, you can't, because they were never asked.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Yes.
But, but, but when, when the term expired, I appointed and you all hadn't approved it. So now it's two that, uh, that's, uh, that had been rolled over. So like, that's why, when, when one term expired, I nominated somebody. So now it's, it's, it's still three.
That's just one.
It's three. Look, 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 look at, look at the list that I gave you. Ms. Ramsay, do you have any, any minutes over there?
Okay, so we know, we know. So you got.
The names is on the commission?
Yes. We know she's been. He's been sworn in. Okay, Ed Sheffler, okay, and then who's a third one? Or we don't have? Or do we have?
Those are the three that she could find terms for.
Okay, so Ms. Ms. Monday, Ms. Shiffler and John. And you're saying John rolled off. But the law says it, if, it runs off and you, and you replace them, then they just roll over. I understand, you want, you wanna, you wanna get somebody else on, that's fine.
I mean, so.
I'm just saying, but he's lea- he's lea- it's legally operating, that's why.
Yeah, but it's, it's three names that I've submitted to you all.
I don't think he was ever appointed to.
Neither How or Brother were appointed. And that's why I gave the three names we, I gave. So, so the note from the clerk shows that Mr. Shiffler was appointed March the twenty-fifth, two thousand eight. Most the King was appointed March the fourth, two thousand nine. And this Monday was appointed September of twenty twenty. And then her notes says the other guy from two thousand six to present to indicate when they were appointed. So, so then, so we got, I asked me to draw three names and I would like for y'all to consider those three names. Do you, do I need to give you, give you the name?
Can I ask you this? Uh, earlier, and one of the commissions, you said that there was. Someone was nominated for the board and after four or five days, if no one, if actually was taking their counters. Is that the same situation for the airport commission?
Not as far as I bring. The, the airport commission, the nuance is the mayor gets the. And council has to approve. And so that's kind of the check and balance that nominates. So. In the ideal circumstances, uh, if the person doesn't have mayor's support, they step aside. But that's not always what happens. And so, you know, the council has to ratify whomever the mayor. In a seven, in a three-four situation, you need five out of the six to vote for whoever it is. Or do, you know, a voice vote.
In the absence of them voting, you just stay on.
The, the three are fine. The two are not. And the, the two potentially cause some jeopardy in terms of what they may have participated in. And not having the lawful authority to do them. Cause they're not covered by this whole, because they, they didn't have the status to start with. So, any, any, actually you took on these, these names tonight? We're gonna stay on the line.
Uh, we had Barn, didn't we? When Mr. Moore, Barn still, when Mr. Barn still in there.
Oh, well, we got Mr. Barn.
I don't think it's a whole lot to talk about, Mr. Moore, other than, if we can. It just seemed like there'd be, be some things that need to be clarified. It seemed like there were some things that need, might, needed to be clarified that maybe were. So do we want to go into executive session then? Let's go ahead and get this over. So do we want to go into executive session now? Let's go ahead and get this over. Do we want, so do I, should I move to, move to executive session?
Who is sworn in? No, they have to be approved by the city council. The mayor of the city council, they have to be approved by city mayor, city council. Yeah, that's, that's ultra virus acts, and that's an act beyond the authority. Yeah, that would be highly illegal. You have no authority.
Okay.
The question, the mayor is saying, can one of the board members swear one of the others in here? If you'd never had authority to be there, then, then your action will be illegal. You had to come to the body, the mayor has to nominate, and the city council has to affirm. The record is clear that has not happened. And so Howard and Mr. Brothers are not members of the commission.
I think Dr. Miller's asking you all for an executive session on the market.
And I'm thinking, I'm doing.
Is there motion going to executive session?
So, no.
Mrs. Miller, second's the motion in discussion. Madam clerk, call the row, please.
Proud to go into the executive session. I also want you all to, what I've been quoting is the commission should keep a record of all revenues and expenses reported and shall make a report monthly to the mayor and the city council.
Yeah, so we need to begin.
So do we need to make a motion for them to do that?
No, it's required by.
That's understandable.
But that's motion second, that had to be a board vote on the executive session.
Hey, do we, we need to finish this vote. Everybody on the.
Motion second. Of the executive session.
Miller, uh, Davis.
Yes.
Heather Lee.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
This is like Columbia. To go into executive session. Doctor Miller, yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Hey, um, Derek.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to thank the President of the State Department for his recommendation to put this motion into effect.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Dyas.
Yes.
Mr. Ed.
Yes.
I think there's any action to be taken from executive session.
Yes.
Mr. Ed.
Yes.
I will, but no, I just, I just said that I don't know if you have, I said that I don't think there's any action to be taken from the executive session and I guess if everybody agrees then we can go home.
Do you need to, you gonna speak to the attorney?
I am, I'm gonna talk to him after the meeting so.
Okay.
Is there a question for me?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'll ask.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Think there's any action to be taken from executive session?
Mr. Say, Columbia? Were you going to speak to?
I will, but no, I just I just said, and I don't know if you heard me. I said that I don't think there's any action to be taken from the executive session. And I guess if everybody agrees, then we can go home.
Do you need to, you want to speak to the attorney?
I am. I'm going to talk to him after the meeting, so.
Okay.
Is there a question for?
I'm going to, I'll ask.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. You move to adjourn.